Call order, Board Commissioners, regular quarterly work session at Jefferson County Courthouse. One call please.
Fifteen members present, six absent.
Fifteen present, six absent. Would you ever want to please stand? Please, please, standing.
Our heavenly Father has come before you tonight, Lord, we pray his blessings upon all that made their choice to be here. We pray God that you would send a protective shield over our little nation, Ezra, tonight, as we see the war is getting worse every day. We pray God for our nation, that our political people now get in tune with you and make right decisions concerning the nation that we live in. Because we know that we can lose if we're not careful, but if we don't turn to you this time to me, instead of turning to the political arena, or the fight gets worse every day. We pray God tonight for this meeting, pray for the ones in charge. Let God that you bless this county, bless the officials, be with our sheriff department, as their entire nation is kept tonight. We pray now for this council, that it might be, if everything doesn't be done, indeed, we should be as old and according as I were, we ask in Jesus' holy name, and amen.
Amen. Attention, salute please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like everyone coming out this evening, and we'll get started on the agenda, proclamations and courtesy resolutions. We have a great proclamation project, Mr. Jimmy Russell, I believe, and Barbara Dean Sheets, Carrie Stanley, James Gordon Pack, Charles Tipton, and Karen. You will have as a public hearing next week, Resolution 2022 dash.
Tonight, no, it's tonight.
It's tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. We will have to open the public hearing, this hearing is hereby open. Resolution 2022 dash fifteen, amending the zoning resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee, by establishing an I three zoning district in Jefferson County, Tennessee. Do them all three together, alright? The B resolution is Resolution 2022 dash sixteen, resolution amending the zoning resolution of Jefferson County, Tennessee, by defining permitting and regulating cryptocurrency mining facilities in I three zoning district of Jefferson County, Tennessee. Resolution 2024 dash twenty-three, resolution amending the zoning map of Jefferson County, Tennessee, by resoning property from A one agriculture forestry to C two general commercial, Deep Springs Road, Danridge. Map zero seven four is a portion, zero one six point zero four, one acre, by Nicholas and Brecklin Sample. Is anyone here to speak in this hearing? Sir, would you please come to the podium? State your name and where you're from.
Maybe I'm just out of order, but I'm Nick Sample and I'm from.
Yeah, he's.
Okay.
You don't have, you, you won't speak, you can't even.
Oh, I don't have.
You, you can speak if you wish to.
I, I don't really have anything to say.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Sample?
This was approved by the planning commissioner.
That was my next question. Anyone have a question or comment, this hearing is now closed. Thank you. Vote next week. Next, we have approval and corrections to the agenda. First, we need to add beer board minutes by Mr. Trent Harrington. What else, do you have something to add? We'll be adding beer board minutes, there is not a beer board in this meeting, and Mr. Mayor.
Possibly in the agenda, Adam, TDEC has reached out wanting to use property triage, they bring, uh, bring out the lake. County attorney that's, uh, talking will leave them now, if we get something worked out, we, we'll probably want to add that to the gym next week, provide this body is willing to lease land. They're not, they're not putting it in our landfill, they got to bring it out of the lake, they got to triage, and we want to disciple what those were. They need space to do that, they've reached out to the gynecologist, he has land available. They're holding us up on the permits, so we're probably going to hold them up on the slate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, does anybody have a question for the mayor or Mr. Job? Not hearing any, we'll move right along. Uh, next week, we double action of your officers, chairman, chairman pro temp, chaplain, and parliamentarian. Next, you have a regular quarterly session of Jefferson County Board Commissioners' meetings for July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. For your approval. Next, we have appearance of citizens. Has anyone filled out a paper that wishes to speak, that I do not have? I don't have any. First to speak will be Jim Fox. Sir, state your name and address, you got three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jim Fox, one nine zero nine, Adeling Trail, Denver. Good evening, guys. I realize this is a workshop, so, uh, I'll notice there's two items on the agenda, uh, referring to will, revenue being the wheel tax and the rental tax. Uh, wheel tax, from what I understand, would generate about one point two million. All of it would be locally funded by locally residents, by paying their wheel taxes. The rental tax would generate, I'm not sure how much, I don't have that information. Mostly, it would not be locally funded, because it would involve three businesses, of course, or a few businesses, that will be selling their products out of county and even out of state. So, that's something to consider. Now, as you know, I'm a proponent of regulations for short-term rentals. Some of those include licensing, inspections, saturation levels for subdivisions, occupancy rates based on two per bedroom, or s- based on a subject letter, background checks, checks on owners and operators, enforcement, and taxes, all to protect our guests, residents, and community. I look to help others and have run some numbers to the best friend, what numbers we have available. After expenses, meaning hiring an enforcement officer and clerical, and this amount, which we estimate to be about two hundred thousand dollars. A low range net return on investment, after those expenses, low range would be two point seven million. Mid-range would be four million, high range would be six million dollars. That is money that is, that is being left on the table right now, that's, uh, folks from, at, from the, our residents of this county that are guests, or folks that own property that live out of state, most of them, that would be paying with taxes. This would not be a burden on the residents of this county, this would potentially be pretty much. Uh, all of that could easily offset wheel tax, even lower property taxes. And it would have zero impact on, on all of the residents. Uh, we appreciate that, uh, this council would, uh, uh, consider that in discussions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Kathleen Villers.
Hi, everyone, I would, Kathleen Villers, twenty-two oh two Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, and along with others, I'd like to, um, extend my prayers to everyone suffering from the hurricanes right now, horrific. I happen to be one of those that worked with Mr. Fox on some of the short-term rentals, and I'd like to suggest to you that I think this could be a great revenue source going forward for the county. As he mentioned, some numbers were ran, run, and in three minutes, I have detailed spreadsheets for anyone interested, but, uh, the low range is two point seven million net new revenues per year. A mid-range, four point one million, and an optimistic or high range, six million. And what, what that would do is provide a great revenue source for the county. One of the added things I'd like to point out, and I can send this to your inbox tomorrow morning, um, I created some graphs. And the graphs look at, under one source, continuing our current wheel tax for a few years as an interim bridge. And the reason that this would be good is because we just can't snap our fingers and get new revenue in tomorrow. But if we could continue the wheel tax for a few years, I think it would provide a more level funding source for us to look at for the county. If we dis, or don't continue the wheel tax, it will take a little while to ramp up the short-term rental revenues that Jim talked about, from grocery receipts tax, licensing fees, occupancy tax, et cetera. But in the meantime, this graph over on this side would show a revenue gap. And my fear is if we've got a revenue gap, well, about a million and a half dollars, maybe two million dollars, where would we need to look to get those revenue sources? And I don't think any of you want to go and tap on the door of property tax owners, that'd be another roughly six cents on property tax owners. So I, along with others, would ask you to please consider a short-term rental option, looking to get those revenues in, but in the interim, to keep in mind an interim, perhaps three years, wheel tax to bridge, so we get there, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bethany Jones.
Am I ever allowed to distribute a copy to the members here?
It came before or after, maybe?
Before or after, but not right now. Okay, thank you.
Bethany Jones, two oh three Begonia Lane, Jefferson City. I'm the director of Dandridge Municipal Library, which is part of the Jefferson County Public Library System and the Department of Jefferson County Government. On behalf of the Jefferson County Library Board, the directors of the four libraries, and all library employees, I appreciate the opportunity to address the commission tonight. As part of our budget proposal for this fiscal year, we requested to increase the base pay rate for library employees to fifteen dollars an hour for full-time library assistance, and twelve dollars per hour for part-time library clicks and substitutes. This did not pass. At that time, I was out on maternity leave and was not able to attend these meetings. I would like to comment now on this request and ask that it be considered again. Current starting pay rates are eleven seventy an hour for full-time employees, and eleven twenty-four an hour for part-time staff. The current staff averaging thirteen ten an hour full-time, and twelve twenty an hour part-time. These rates have remained stagnant for over a decade, only increasing due to across-the-board pay raises and cost of living adjustments. At least eighteen positions, I have copies of them here, with similar qualifications and duties, have been available across the state since April. Hourly rates for those positions average fifteen fifty-four an hour. According to MIT, a living wage for a single person with no dependents in Jefferson County is nineteen twenty-seven an hour. Out of sixteen permanent non-substitute positions, six have had vacancies in the past two fiscal years. This is an unprecedented level of turnover for our libraries, and is due to wages not keeping up with the cost of living, or reflecting the experience and value our employees bring to their position. Last year, our four libraries were visited nearly eighty thousand times. Those sixteen staff hosted nearly eight hundred programs, attended by over eleven thousand individuals, checked out nearly a hundred thousand items, provided technological assistance over seventeen hundred times, and answered over twenty thousand questions. All of that assistance includes helping job searches and resume writing, referring people to social services, and research assistance, just to name a few. Our current employees have over one hundred and fifty years of experience, four state certifications, and five master's degrees, that help them ensure that everyone who comes to the library leaves with the information they need. When these employees leave for better opportunities, Jefferson County and suffer while we struggle to find replacements willing to work for what we can pay. We understand the difficult financial decisions county commissioners have had to make this year. Our library employees work hard every day to ensure that Jefferson County and feel the value of every dollar given to the library system. Without adequate salaries to ensure they can continue to live in Jefferson County and support themselves and their families, we cannot provide the best return on the county's investment. Our employees can only stretch themselves so far, especially when experiencing the sort of turnover we have experienced recently. What we are asking for is not unreasonable or exorbitant, we are simply looking to ensure that our support staff earn a decent wage, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Nelson.
I'm David Nelson, I live at four seventy Judson Road in Starbury Plains. What I want to speak about tonight is applying the paper of the mineral severance tax. First, let's consider the county's financial position. At a recent school board meeting, I became aware that in twenty nineteen, millions of dollars in needed repairs were reported to the school board. Five years later, in two thousand twenty-four, many of those repairs still are not done. Also, everyone is aware, of course, about the implorable conditions in Jefferson Elementary. Second, county employees are not being paid half their pay. We are short on staffing, because we are not able to recruit workers due to what, substandard pay rates. Many Jefferson County residents work in surrounding counties, as teachers and law enforcement officers, so they can earn inadequate pay, including some of our commissioners. Three, in last month's meeting, last quarter's meeting, the chairman of the budget committee said to expect at least a one point five million dollar shortfall for the upcoming year. Well, the shortfall is going to be a million, million and a half next year, what about the year after that? Two million, two and a half? A year after that, three million? In short, the county has inadequate revenues to meet its operating expenses. Those expenses will not be going down, they will only go up. The county's property tax base has not grown sufficiently to meet its rising operating expenses. We now have only one way to pay for increasing expenses, that is, increase the property tax rate. We just raised it, and we will have to raise it again next year, and the next year, and the next year. Unless, of course, the county finds other sources of revenue. You've already heard about one, now we're talking about the severance tax, it also is another source of revenue. We are the only county in East Tennessee that does not impose a minimum tax. Now, let's consider possible arguments against the severance tax. One might be that operators are providing jobs, so maybe we shouldn't tax them. Another is, operators will cease doing business and go away, leaving workers out of the job. Counterarguments for that are these. One, operators in all these other counties are still in business, they have not closed up shop in Galway. Two, operators will look at the severance tax simply as a cost of doing business and pass it along to their customers. Three, Jefferson County has valuable mineral resources, let's don't give them away, instead, let's let the operators take them. In summary, imposing this tax will help reduce future property tax increases. Let businesses operating for a profit bear some of the tax burden, instead of it all being borne by county residents. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, moving right along, next we have the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county commission. A few items for information for you. I just wanted to give you an update, an update of the budget committee on our ADA that is previously present. County annex is, is completely done with in the back, the rear entrance, being ADA access back there. Courthouse bid drop, documents are being drawn. Uh, the architect written that's doing ADA should present us with bids on courthouse, which also includes the board of education. The good news is the five-hundred and fifty station, which is a voting place, and it was a priority, it is completed. Uh, also, in the courthouse, it's not that we haven't done anything, trustee's office, the registered deeds office, those are now compliant, ADA is just a matter of, uh, ones up on the second floor, so, so that's going to be done. Health department is finishing up, and the justice center is finishing up, the convenience centers, the signs have been gone up, so that's good. Uh, the finance offices are fixing up, the annex up here, they did the sidewalk out front, that's all the ADA that we had to do, rather than we put the door up where people have to use the ADA bathroom, we don't have to bring those up with ADA, so we got one there. So that's ADA items. You asked me to come back for information on revenue streams, on the way to get revenue in, so, uh, apparently, we're not the only county that's having revenue problems. Subsection Academy Mayor's, uh, using about seventy of it, and everybody's going that the state has money in their coffers, uh, based on what they get off of us, and they feel like the state should share revenue we generate with us. So, in your package, you will, you will find a sheet that has, uh, it's highlighted, says Jefferson County at the bottom. This is the, uh, real estate transfer tax. And Jack probably knows more about that than I do, but it's generated in our county by us, real estate transfer tax. We send that money to the state. The state takes that money and uses a quite large portion for state arts. The upside of that is, they're only using about fifty percent. The fifty percent they don't use, they're rolling over into the state's fund balance, which is what, seven billion right now? So, county mayors and other elected officials are saying, hey, we're struggling, we need revenue stream. So, the proposal that the, uh, governments have sat together, or county mayors, we're asking the state to let us retain half of retail, uh, transfer tax. In our case, uh, we will collect two point two million projected for fiscal year twenty-four, that'd be one point one million back in our, back in our budget year. So, we're working on that, hopefully we're successful. Uh, we're kind of doing another with them, because, uh, the state usually will choose the lesser of two, so we're, we're taking a two, two-pronged approach. The other thing is, the lottery, that's designated for schools. The lottery can be used from primary through grade twelve capital projects. We're asking the state and sales tax to be established on that, and that that money be designated to capital projects within the existing system of the county. So, we don't know which one, we may not get either one, but we're trying, so if you ask for different revenue streams, this, this is the way we're working. I've included, uh, state legislative regulations from ETE and national regulations. Also included twenty twenty-five, all that schedule that's agreed upon by all the county commissioners. And we've had some changes in the office, Dave Lamarr has retired, we spread those duties out, Jeff Dick is now doing maintenance and repairing buildings, uh, Kerry Davis is supervisor of custodians, and Carolyn and Lainey are handling the invoices. We've roughly, right now, we're saving about five thousand dollars a month on some of the stuff that we've reevaluated and redone, it's about forty thousand in salary savings, so, uh, we're saving some money on buildings, uh, it's such a hard work, did some stuff, we've paid rent on some stuff we shouldn't have bought a long time ago, we bought it, we're no longer paying rent. So, right now, I, I think the last time I looked at spreadsheet, Jessica made a couple, she seemed pretty happy every time I told her to save money on something. We're about four to five thousand a month right now that we're saving on some stuff, so, working hard, trying to use money, any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Question or comment? Thanks, sir. Next, we have chairman's comments, I've been notified by the, uh, school board members, Doug Ibetson, Edinson is here this evening, and, uh, they're wanting, uh, three county commissioners to be on ad hoc committee with the school board for future school planning. So if you're interested in being on that, give me a holler after the meeting, or next week, and we will see, we're open to volunteers. I don't know what all this is going to entail, it's going to be probably four or five meetings a year, so, anyone that's interested, please give us a holler. Moving right along, the other elected officials, you have, uh, you got it, Kirk, Kirk Harrington?
I just got your quarterly, uh, financial report, and in addition to that, we've got some, uh, uncollected, uncollectible debt, and we'd like to write off, auditors request your approval to do that. Just some return checks that have aged further than ten years old. And, uh, we can't find the people, we've tried, we've had, uh, the orange issue for them, we've done every avenue we can. Two hundred dollars there we'd like to write off and clear our books, and then, uh, I've got surplus resolution, other than that, that's all I've got.
Mr. Beals?
It's not in my package.
Some weird sense.
Some John Leo is making.
Some of it's either, but he don't have a package yet. But you can.
No, we can, we can learn any in here any minute, but I don't have it.
Unless I cut him out.
I've got personnel. Here we go. Oh, got it, got it, we got it, got it. Sorry about that, let's back up here, let's phone nominating committee in.
Are you done, Frank?
Nominating committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, sorry, but Kevin Poe wanted to speak, and he's on here, so whatever you.
Sure, I didn't know he wanted to speak.
You, you can, my, mine is actually new business, so you can put me in.
New business?
Either way. You have to talk to the.
Nominating committee, let's clear it up, and then we'll get to you.
Yeah.
So nominating committee met tonight, uh, there were several positions open, I looked them as quick as possible, our recommendations. Uh, ag extension committee, we needed a farm person, or farm man, and, uh, Aaron Loy was nominated for that. Uh, on the facilities commission, or committee, we needed five commissioners, uh, we nominated, or we bring to you the suggestion, Jim Snodgrass, Katie Huffaker, Austin Brooks, Greg Berg, and myself. On the finance committee, uh, we need four commissioners, Katie Huffaker, Janet Glaney, Janet Norton, I'm sorry, apologize. Marcus Reed, uh, and John Johnson. Personnel committee, we needed, uh, five of those, we have John Johnson, Janet Norton, Jimmy Dale, and Ronnie Coleman, and Heidi Thomas. And on public service, we needed five commissioners, we had Katie Huffaker, Janet Norton, A.J. Walker, Sammy Solomon, and myself, and that's all we have.
Question or comment?
What was that last name?
Uh, public service.
Public service will be real popular come January. All right, Mr. Kevin Poe.
Okay to do this now, even though it's your duty?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, sir.
We have, um, lost several individuals to, uh, either passing away in retirement in the public safety sector, and I would like to pursue building a public safety memorial at the justice center. Just need approval to solicit quotes, and then provide what that might cost, and. That's what I'm going to be, that's the number question.
All right, is there a question or comment? Thanks, sir. Okay, we're moving right along, highway department, Joe Patterson, do you have anything? Register of deeds, sheriff's department, Mr. Carter. Assessor property, Susan Gess. County trustee, Jennifer Bowlin Hall. Jefferson County constable, Jacob Thompson. We'll get redundant department director reports, bill and inspector Rob Wilson. Sanitation department, David Goss. Question or comment, David, do you have anything? Department of Education. Department of education, Dr. Arnold, Arnold is not with us, the senior, but, uh, Gibson is. Is there a question or comment? Doug?
I'm kind of up here by default. Uh, Dr. Arnold was going to be here, but he's not feeling well. So, he asked me if I was going to be here if I could fill in. Um, there's a couple of things, and again, I don't know really what you have in your packet because, uh, you know, we had, what I'm saying, maybe repetitive benefits, please, I'll give you that. Um, a couple of things that have happened at the, uh, school board. Number one, we have awarded a contract to Lincoln Ship and Associates. And they, uh, just spent up to seventy-five thousand dollars to do a, uh, detailed renovation estimate. Uh, it should be here by January. This is what I believe you've been asking for, for the last four or five years as an alternative to, uh, building a new Jefferson Elementary School. Uh, once we get that, we'll review it and then present it to you for your, uh, your consideration. Uh, secondly, we have received, uh, schematic drawings and, uh, cost estimates on the tablet edition. Thirdly, um, we are in the process of getting a scope of work put together for the, uh, plan. Uh, that is again, another alternative to a new Jefferson Elementary School, uh, which is somehow becomes, you know, is the hot plan. Uh, we're putting a scope of work together on that, which would not only include the adding the additional wind, but any other work that would need to be done on the high school, the Patriot Academy, and the middle school for that. Uh, we have not let out a bid for that yet because we don't have the scope of work. That's expected in a couple of months. Uh, lastly, um, and I might as well speak to this right now, you have further on your agenda, an ad hoc committee that Chairman Carmichael mentioned. Um, what this is, is we feel it's time with the new, uh, school board members and with the new, uh, county commission to put some of the, how shall I say, dissatisfaction between the two organizations behind us move forward. To do that, we think the best way would be to keep you informed of what's going on at the school board, for you to keep us informed of what's going on at, at the county commission that affect both our bodies. So, we're asking for a joint conference committee, uh, where three members and the mayor from the county commission, uh, would formally be on it. We have already elected three members from the school board with Tommy Arnold as an advisor. Uh, we come together hopefully once a quarter, discuss items of mutual interest and, uh, have it to be kind of a roundtable discussion. The full school board and the full county commission would be welcome to attend and we would encourage them to attend. The only reason we have three formal members from each was that so that on any given day, we know that those six people at least would be there. But they, it's a non-voting, non-policy making committee, and we do hope that you'll consider it and join us in, uh, moving forward and improving relationships between, between the two bodies. Thank you.
Question?
Mr. Doug?
Yes?
Do you have, or have you presented any details on those plans that you were talking about?
Which plans are those? The one on tablet?
The one you referred to as the pod plan?
We, I, what I have done is I have provided to Dr. Arnold the, the template that I provided to you, the kind of describes the idea. He is using that and is going to be, uh, working with, uh, Austin Bridgewater to go around and determine, okay, if this were to take place, what would we need to do? Put together a scope of work. We don't have it yet.
Okay, that's what I was asking. I had, I had several calls from citizens that has some rumors about that plan, and I just wanted to know if you had details.
We are in the process of putting together a scope of work.
Thank you, sir. Moving right along, we have emergency communications district, Jessica Crawford. Emergency medical services, Brad Phillips. Mr. Brad?
I'll be as quick as possible. Uh, my apologies, I was out of town when the, uh, reports, so I'll just give you a quick update on our quarterly reports, as it was not included in your packet. Um, our call volume stays pretty much stable. Um, most importantly, the issue worried about is our revenue, and we are on track to meet our projected, our first quarter, we, we brought in, uh, one point one million dollars, which will put us at that four point two that we projected for the, for the year, or actually above four point two if we stay at that rate. So, we're doing well there. On the emergency management side, um, I've had several calls about, um, our storm response. Um, obviously, on the emergency management side, we were, we were in charge of some of that, um, in response to our damage and those kind of things from the ring. We were very fortunate in Jersey County, um, in that we weren't impacted as our neighbors were with floodwaters. However, we're being impacted now with debris and other things from that. Um, the mayor declared a state of emergency, um, on October first, was that when we did that? About, yeah, somewhere in that, in that range when we began to see the, the developing impacts, um, from that. Um, we were included and added by the governor and FEMA on the public assistance portion, which is the part that reimburses, uh, our utilities and our road departments and those kind of things, the public entities. Um, so we will be working with them to go back and, and file those claims on behalf of those entities. Um, our current estimates are over one million dollars in impact to the county, primarily to the utility system, um, from the storm damage. Um, is primarily where that impact came. Um, at the height of the storm, we had over fifty roads that were blocked by trees. And, uh, Appalachian record had approximately ten thousand customers at the initial outset that were without power and that were working to restore. Obviously, as, um, events developed throughout the day, that initial days, multiple en- emergency agencies responded to assist Cock County, um, in their efforts there to rescue people from floodwaters and, and to respond to those calls there. And we had a request to, uh, send our mass casualty bus, which we were en route to Irwin to help evacuate hospitals when we were turned around. Uh, when we got word that the dam above Cock County might be failing, and so they turned us around in case we were going to be here. So, that was part of what went on there. Uh, many of you may have heard, we had, um, the community of Swanson Bay was impacted by a water outage because they received their water through banner utilities that comes from Newport, which is in that area. Um, I received word on that Sunday that they would be out of water within a day and a half to two days, um, because their tank would be empty and Newport was not able to supply them with any more water for an determined amount of time. So, we began immediately working on a plan to distribute water to those people that would be without clean and drinkable water or usable water. And so, um, we set up a water distribution point. We distributed in eight days, over eight, uh, excuse me, over a thousand cases of water, um, um, in those eight, eight days to those families in that community. Um, Anderson was able to get the water back from Newport a lot quicker than we anticipated. Um, we made arrangements to have about three weeks supply of water on hand. We had that thankfully, um, with cooperative agreement with, uh, Swanson Bay and Baggers Church, they had a lot larger warehouse there. Um, we were able to have about, um, I think we had forty-two pallets of water. Within two days, we had it set in there ready to distribute if we needed it. Um, luckily, we didn't need all that water there, but that water was redistributed, um, to Bristol Motor Speedway, to the distribution point there for the flood victims in northeast Tennessee, um, as well as to directly to Irwin, Tennessee, um, as well. So, that water was redistributed to those victims that, that needed the water. We did not hold on to any of that water. It was redistributed to those who need. Um, just wanted to give you an update on that. We're continuing to work with FEMA and, um, other organizations to, um, secure reimbursement funding for those entities in the county that are impacted by storm damage. Um, and we will continue to work with the mayor's office and TBA and TAD to mitigate the impacts to the county, not only on our lake and our water system. We're monitoring all that. We get calls every other day, um, on how to, um, develop their plan to clean up the debris in the lake and protect our citizens. So, we're making sure we monitor Jefferson County's interest in all that, both, um, public, private, and, um, tourist, uh, impacts that we may, may see from that. So, we'll continue monitoring that. Have any questions or have any concerns that come from citizens about any of that? Please forward them to my office and we'll do our best to answer those questions.
Does anyone have a question or comment for Mr. Brad? Thank you, sir. Next, we've got environmental, Tom Carter, you have the packet. And, uh, the mayor, we will finance department, Mr. Jesse.
Okay, so within your packet, um, you are able to see the details on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four roll. Um, I can go over that. Our general fund one-on-one, the roll was approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. So, our current unassigned fund balance is around six point one million dollars. Fund one sixteen sanitation that we've been watching closely, uh, it had a decent roll of three hundred thousand dollars to give it around a five hundred fifty thousand dollar unassigned fund balance. Highway, fund one thirty-one, roll was around one point three million dollars. So, its current unassigned fund balance is around four point eight million dollars. And I do have this verbiage in there, but I'd also like to remind you, um, these are unaudited financial information that can be changed reflecting audit results and/or adjustments. Does anyone have any questions on our year-end roll? Okay, um, the next item, I'll just briefly go over. You all have that letter from the Tennessee Comptroller acknowledging the receipt of our fiscal year twenty-five budget. Um, page two, I do just want to bring your attention to because we have a lot of discussions on if we can or cannot use fund balance to budget our budget. We can, as long as it is for one-time capital expenditures. So, under the structurally balanced budgets paragraph in that letter, um, it says during a review of the budget, we noted that the general fund and the highway fund are budgeted to use and gives the amounts of fund balance respectively exclusive of planned capital expenditures. So, I had to submit what those one-time expenditures were and, um, apparently it appeased them and we're going to roll with it. So, I'm very happy and I just want to say thank you so much for, um, this past budget cycle. Think that was year three with me for a budget cycle and it only gets more fun each year. So, looking forward to it. Um, you guys do have a budget calendar and assumptions that we will next week. Um, that's coming from a recommendation from budget committee because we're going to roll right into it, January first. We're going to start budgeting for next fiscal year. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Thank you.
Next, we have health department. Question or comment? Ted? Jefferson Park? Office of aging? Soil conservation? Tourism? Is Lauren here and have anything?
No, she's definitely on.
No, Pam? UT extension, Karen Nels? Veteran service? Not hearing any, we'll move right into budget committee.
I've got...
We're not quite through yet, and it's lengthy. Do you all want me to go over what we got? Hold up the next meeting? All right. Pleasure to meet you. I yield, Mr. Chairman. All right. Next, we have personnel committee.
Terry Doctor, the chair, but Ronnie Coleman is the vice.
Sure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Leslie Purser. Um, I along with two other veterans who are citizens of Jefferson County, received approval from the mayor to provide assistance in the selection of a veteran service officer on the path to a prison setting. The, uh, the three of us studied, um, twenty-five packets and we selected three individuals to interview. We interviewed those three individuals and unanimously selected one candidate who we presented to personnel committee. Personnel committee also unanimously approved our selection. I would just like to introduce you to her tonight, and her name is Marissa King. Thank you.
Thank you. Question or comment? Thank you. Next, we have nonprofits, Jefferson Lights, Jefferson County Auxiliary Radio Emergency Services, Jake Hares, Companion Animal Rescue and Education Package. Next, you have reports from all your fire departments. And now we're down to libraries. Who wants me to libraries, Mr. Speaker? Not hearing any, we'll move down to Safe Harbor Child Advocacy Center packet. Question or comment? Safe Space? A question or comment? Now we're down to old business. There is no old business that I'm aware of. Would we like to, uh, notice the youth leadership here tonight? Would you please stand up? We appreciate y'all coming out to see how Duggan learns, no matter how boring it is. Next, to new business, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, surplus resolution, surplus and transfer to landfill nineteen ninety-nine GMC truck. Question or comment? Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash two-five, resolution sheriff's department, block cameras. Question or comment? Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, resolution authorizing an additional motor vehicle privilege tax and providing for the disposition of the proceeds thereof. Question or comment? Not hearing any. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, surplus resolution, county clerk. Question or comment? Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, surplus resolution, Parrot Wood Library. Question or comment? Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, surplus resolution, county mayor's office. Mayor, do you have anything?
Broken down desk, uh, surplus, you know.
Thanks, sir. Question or comment for the mayor? Not hearing any. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty, resolution recommending approval of the town damages request to expand their urban, urban growth boundary in Jefferson County, Tennessee. Question, comment? Not hearing any. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one, resolution to levy a mineral tax on all sand, gravel, sandstone, charred, and limestone severed from the ground in Jefferson County, Tennessee. Rob Levers, Mr. Levers, you have the floor.
Any questions about it? As far as what you've heard David Nelson speak to is right on target with it. It's, um, there's six counties in east Tennessee that have mining operations, excuse me, that don't have it. And most of those don't have mining operations in order to need it. One of them's severe counties. We should probably see if we should borrow money from them cheaper than a bank. They don't need it. So, we have it, uh, we, we do not have it. And we'll have some graphics next week there to show us what every other county has brought in. It comes in quarterly, reported to the trustee's office, uh, excuse me, given to the trustee's office from the state. Knox County just completed their first round of it, their first quarter of it. They brought in two hundred twenty-three thousand... They brought in two hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars and forty-nine cents, the first quarter of it, never having it. They're still operating just fine. And I don't know, they take a lot of other minerals out of the ground too, that I hope that we can include into it, whatever the state will allow us to include it under the statute. And I think our attorney, Doug Brennan, could speak to anything else that could be added to it. These companies mine also trace metals, so trace amounts of copper, platinum, gold, silver, fluoride, lead, I don't know, lithium, whatever you can mine here. And, you know, it's not targeted at any, the mines in Strawberry Plains or anywhere else. It's targeted at, we run nurseries, businesses, garden centers, we pay taxes on trees. If we go by the logic, we shouldn't tax these guys, we should just stop taxing the gas stations too because I don't want oil companies to go out of business either. But if this tax is enacted and it's collected, it one hundred percent goes to the county highway fund. I've talked to the county, the new highway director about it. Didn't seem to have any problems with it on their end. And whether it brings in half a million, one million, or fifty million, it's a million we didn't have, or a hundred thousand we didn't have. And I know we're doing more mining than the rest of the counties collecting it. So any other questions I can help with, I'll try.
Question or comment?
Question, Mr. Levers. How much do you anticipate? Have you got any figures on this or what would it bring in?
Well, nice start. Let's say that would be a place to start. You would think they would have the most at it or up-to-date reporting, right, of what they're paping in. But when they were bought out by TriFigra, if I say it right, in twenty nineteen, those numbers are no longer public. They are recorded at some level, but it's kind of hard to find them. So I figure if you enact it under the state of Tennessee's law, whatever they report to the federal government are making, that's where they get their number from. Like I said, Knox County did two hundred and twenty-three thousand their first quarter, so surely something around that neighborhood or better. We have a whole lot more mining going on than honestly the rest of the counties put together. And, um... Again, I don't know how to get the exact number, but it's got to be somewhere in the ballpark between the low end and high end on this list. Of sixteen other counties that have it, all surround us except severe county. We know why they don't, they don't need it. So I would say at least two hundred thousand, we'll start there.
Is that, you're talking about a year or a quarter?
I think that's a quarter. That's what Knox County brought, a quarter. And that's the high end. Our East Tennessee list, I'm sorry we don't have the graphic up for you, but next week we will, the low end in our area would be seventy-three thousand and that's Monrooke.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Sure. You're done. Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Not hearing anybody, we'll move along. Attorney Doctor's not with us tonight, Ad-Hoc Committee, I think that's the committee that I mentioned earlier. And next, we have lobby expense for David Seal, Tennessee Property Rights Protection Act by Mr. Coleman. Coleman should be every same day.
I'd ask Mr. Seal to come and might explain what the expense is exactly for.
Before you do this, Mr. David, let me make a clarification. We're looking on a thing there, whether we may or may not have done it, which is exactly right, just to get more information. We did pass this through the Budget Committee with no recommendation, so you all will be able to hear it with no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I have one minute just to explain where we came from?
Sure.
Okay, I've got a presentation here that takes about one minute and I'll be able to field any questions you have. When we started this eminent domain pilgrimage in twenty sixteen, private property could be forcefully taken by government for industrial parks and recreational facilities. Property owners could not challenge the taking based on necessity. Condemners were not required to prove constitutional public use requirements for takings and not required to have a property use plan or financing to carry out any public use of the acquired property. Condemners were not required to pay survey and engineering fees and judges were not authorized to tax legal fees to the condemneders in certain cases. We changed all of that with two county resolutions and three bills. I'm going to send you all the documentation, copies of the public acts, the links and the videos, all of it. It'll be a lot more than you want to watch and read after I'm done with that. There was a question that came up, can lobbyists work for the government? The answer is yes. I fight city and county lobbyists every time I go to Nashville. You have a screenshot in my lobbyist registration page with the Tennessee Ethics Commission showing Jefferson County as my employer. Special interests, cities, counties, government-funded universities, and administrative agencies all have lobbyists. The Tennessee Lobbyist Association has a lobbyist. And there's three thousand and seventy-four of these lobbyists employers in the state of Tennessee. They're hard to deal with when I go to Nashville. Sixty million dollars per year is spent on payments to Tennessee lobbyists in special interests. Send documentation on that as well. So here's the, you all, the police need to know what the bill's going to do if you're going to pay me to go in and work on it. The bills that I have written are pursuant to a resolution, you know, made in twenty-twenty was Resolution oh-four. It will redefine blighted areas to a more narrow standard. It will eliminate the area definition of blight and replace it with a property to property definition, closing what's called a blight loophole in Tennessee. It will give property owners a reasonable period of duration to facilities in order to avoid a taking. It will authorize housing authorities to pay above market value for property if they want to do a redevelopment plan. It would not prevent any legitimate taking for public use or facilities or properties that meet blight definition. In other words, we're not doing anything that would stop blight remediation for public safety. The bills I've written are called the Tennessee Property Rights Protection Act and I'm requesting an extra two thirty-five hundred dollars to cover out-of-pocket expenses as I lobby the bills in Nashville. What are these out-of-pocket expenses? My gasoline, the travel bill, my hotel bill, the food that I eat while I'm there, and fifty dollars a day park. Any of them been a national race, I mean, no parking's not cheap. So we're there, I'll be happy to entertain you questions.
I'd like to say this about Mr. Seal. What he's doing for us here in Jefferson County is unbelievable for what little that we pay him to do it. With the time that he spends, vehicle repairs and gasoline and his trip, his motor runs and whatever that he has as expenditure, we really ought to appreciate him here on County Commission tonight and we ought to appreciate that in Jefferson County.
Anyone else question or comment? Mr. Chairman? Sure.
Mr. Seal, could you speak on the magazine article that I believe every commissioner had for it to them to mail? Because that record night is not just the hard work you put in, but what this body has done and what the citizens in this county house are for you.
The publication that you're referring to, Mr. Reed, is a journal called Liberty and Law that's published by the Institute for Justice. Their attorneys worked with me every year on eminent domain. They've worked with me for eight years now and they contacted me in July and said, we're going to run a story on the eminent domain things that you have accomplished in the state of Tennessee. One of them was the necessity doctrine. We're the first state and nation to do that. So before we had the necessity doctrine in state law, you couldn't challenge your property taking of your property based on necessity. And that was a big accolade with the Institute of Justice because they promoted that and we're one of the, I think we're the first state to do that, but at least they challenged the doctrine. I insisted when they talked to me in July to make the publication. I said, if you publish anything about me, make sure you put County Commission in it because I am down there operating on the resolutions that you all have been kind enough to make for me and the support that you all have given me to protect, you know, eight million people in the state of Tennessee with their property rights. And I hope that's an adequate explanation of what we've done. This organization has attorneys in San Antonio that are assigned just to help me with this process.
Anyone else?
Thanks, sir. Thank you all.
Kate, on your list is twenty-two-four Home Programs, Homeowners Rehab, Program Policies and Procedure. Question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is the exact same policy procedure we've done on the home rehabilitation grant in the past. We have to adopt this in order to be in touch with others. The applicants have turned in their application for these home grants. Hopefully by January, they should be awarded their grants. Work should begin in spring, so that's seven hundred fifty thousand, but we don't have to match anybody using this county.
Question or comment? Not hearing any, we're going to add L and M. It's been brought to my attention, there's two more resolutions that didn't make the resolutions. It's Resolution twenty-two-four dash three-three. It's Resolution Declaring Surplus to Authorize the Danridge Library to Surplus and Dispose Said Equipment. It's in your packet. And M will be twenty-two-four dash three-four, Resolution Declaring a Surplus to Authorize Jefferson City Library, Jefferson County Surplus to Dispose Said Equipment. And it lists some equipment. Is there a question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll move right back to Interlocal Agreement for Emergency Aid and Emergency Jail Resources, lying between Cobb County, Tennessee, Cobb County Sheriff's Department, Jefferson County, Tennessee, Jefferson County Sheriff's Department.
Agreement this type involves county attorneys, so I reached out to the county attorneys. As you know, Cobb County inmates are in our workhouse that fortunately the dam was empty and they're using it. We need an interlokal agreement because of a certain amount of liability on the county and on you. We have an interlokal agreement that Mr. Dreamin has drawn up. It has to be approved of the Cobb County legislative body, has to be approved of this body, and then it will be enacted. So I'm going to let Mr. Dreamin walk you through and answer questions.
Good evening. I just did my best with the time that I had to put together an interlocal agreement between Cobb County and Jefferson County. I styled it a temporary lease, best I could do. I really have never had much experience in getting, you know, draft that kind of agreement. That's the best that I thought would name it. Long and short of it is, this is a, an agreement that just sets out the Cobb County's responsibilities if they're using our workhouse to keep their inmates in. I did my best on the job of giving it a once-over or a twice-over, a ten-time-over, get that look and if you have any questions, reach out to me. Long and short of it is, basically is, hey, look, if you are going to house your inmates in our workhouse, you've got to be responsible for everything. Utilities, things that I'm ignorant of, that I did my best to learn about, the standards for the Tennessee Corrections Institute, various things that we have to have to be met. If there are any, if there's any of those improvements that have to be done, any expenses or costs that have to be done, that has to be borne by Cobb County. I tried to do my best to put a very, it's not really strict as the word, but stiff identification clause in there about how they're responsible for maintaining security, qualified correctional folks. Any expense with respect to that facility would fall on Cobb County. Okay, that's the, the rent based on the emergency situation was just, it only suggested that it be basically a dollar as long as they pay, just keep the facility. And, you know, it has to be standards. I want you to understand that as the sheriff can tell you and folks with law enforcement backgrounds that they're inspecting. So we put all of that responsibility on Cobb County to do. This was basically a super emergency situation where they were, really didn't really have anywhere else to go as far as I know. And so that's why, but I thought it was an absolute necessity to have someone in writing to set forth the responsibilities that Cobb County had to us. One particular provision I do want to bring to your attention, there is a section in here, it's Section two B. Again, as lawyers often do, they try to help people manage their risk. I don't know that this would ever happen if for some reason the sheriff said, it's time to go, or you guys, whoever said it's time to go, and for some reason they didn't go. I don't anticipate that happening, but if you said, hey, look, if you go here, I'm going to have time to go home, I put a provision in there that would institute an automatic per square foot charge for them using that if they're what lawyers call a holdover. If they're a holdover tenant, then they would have to pay a dollar eighteen cents per square foot, I don't know how many square foot, we don't have any square feet that he...
Around twelve thousand.
Around twelve thousand square feet per month if they're going to be a holdover. So by the way, I have no super double secret information or expertise on that picture. So I wanted to bring that to your attention to let you know that that was just a picture I had inserted based on what I could tell might be commercial, a commercial per square foot in Danridge, however. But I just want you to understand, you all look at this, if you see something that concerns you or something you believe is added, just give me a call. I'll do my best to answer the questions you guys have on it. I thought it was an absolute necessity to have something in writing. I transmitted that to them the end of last week. Their legislative body meets the same day as ours, but it will take the approval of both legislative bodies and both sheriffs will be signing it as well. It has been transmitted to them as well.
Question or comment for your turn? Thanks, sir. Is there any other business to be brought forward?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's complete.
Sure.
I know we're going to be busy next week, but I would like to let the commission know and citizens know that on November the twelfth, at the Night of the Patriots, I worked with Mayor Potts, he supported it, he had the resolution drawn up. We're honoring the last known, and I stress known, World War II veteran in Jefferson County. His name is Joe Sheehan, he lived at Lightport and Whitehawn. He's ninety-seven years old, very short. He served in the United States Navy, he went in seventeen in nineteen forty-four. He served like one year and seven months. And when I brought this up to him, and I worked very closely with Dr. Purser and others to kind of make this happen between us and the school district, and Mr. Iverson is quite familiar with this, along with Dr. Arnold, they totally support it. So at Night of the Patriots, I know that he and one other RIN-era veteran will be honored. And I think that's great that Sitz County would go that far and recognize how many left, very, very few. And I think that was an honor for this commission to support. And I know we talked about before you supported it. And please support Night of the Patriots and thank Jefferson County School Department for supporting us. I especially thank my good friend Wesley, all the hard work she does for the veterans of Jefferson County. And I'm proud to get to know our veteran service officer who's cutting on board. We endorse her next week. She brings quite a stellar performance to the bird and us veterans did the support of a professional veteran service officer and we have handled one. Thank you very much.
Uh, motion, Mr. Chairman?
Do not forget, the Budget Committee needs to go back to session.
Budget Committee, you recommend?